Good evening. Call to order, this meeting of the Saraville Board of Education, February 20th. Please rise and pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
I'm here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Bbone?
Here.
Ms. Pylock?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Here. Ms. Hill, will you summarize executive session, please?
The board discussed personnel, including but not limited to agenda items and matters falling under attorney-client privilege.
And is there any correspondence that we need to...
No, there's not.
Okay. I will now need to take a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting. So move.
Second.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Bbone?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay. And now, are you guys taking turns being here or not being here? No? Okay. All right, so we're going to, since Shaun is not here, we will start with Ashton from the middle school.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Ashton Fondle, SMS Student Council Board of Education representative. The student council sold carnations during lunch to raise money for the NJASC charity, Hugs for Brady. Carnations were delivered on Valentine's Day. The community service food drive with student council were able to donate 1,250 pounds of food to Replenish, which is a distribution center for Middlesex County food banks. Replenish provides food and necessities to our network of over 150 partner organizations, including food pantries, soup kitchens, and social service organizations throughout the 25 towns in Middlesex County to ensure that all residents have access to nutritionally adequate foods and necessities at all times. Casa gift drive with the help of MS staff were able to buy 181 gifts for children involved in the Middlesex County court system. The class council started the Positive Impact bracelets, Together and Choose Kindness. Each week, a student and teacher are recognized why they received the bracelet over the morning announcements. The PTO designer handbag Bingo/Tricky Tray will take place on Friday, March 15th. Tickets on sale. Family Pizza Bingo Night will be rescheduled and the date announced soon. Save the date for the Harlem Wizards game on April 4th. Now on to the Saraville Middle School athletics, and I have no current update for that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Playing ball in the spring or wrestling? Are you wrestling? You're gonna turn out like this guy.
Great job, Ashton. As always, buddy.
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, good night, Ashton. Good night, Mom.
Good night, Ashton.
Okay. President's comments. I really don't have any comments for tonight. Do you have any comments over there? They have lots of comments, obviously. Are we holding a meeting here? What's going on? Excuse me. Okay. I have no comments. We will let the vice president read the highlights, please.
There's a lot of them, too. Congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School musician, Richard Kuzma, who successfully auditioned for the New Jersey All-State Band and was selected to be a member of the band once again this year. Congratulations to Saraville Middle School musicians Nick Attix and Austin Yu on their acceptance into the 2024 Central Jersey Music Education... Educated Association, sorry, band and orchestra this year. Congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School student and Leo Club member, Gianna Wannawitz, who was recently awarded the 2024 New Jersey Clean Communities Volunteer Award, which is given to community members and organizations who have demonstrated measurable results in reducing litter and promoting anti-litter education. Congratulations to Saraville War Memorial High School 11th grader, Risha Shaw, who recently named a big future ambassador for Spring of 2024. Big future by College Board and Power students like Risha to explore, plan, and prepare for higher education. Congratulations to Saraville War Memorial High School wrestler Connor Walsh for winning the 285-pound division during the Greater Middlesex Conference Wrestling Championship and the NJSIAA District 18 Tournament. Congratulations also to Saraville War Memorial High School wrestler Robert Fritz for winning the 120-pound division during the NJSIAA District 18 Tournament. And then congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School girls bowler, Jamaiah Myers, for winning the GMC Individual Girls Bowling Championship. Congratulations to Saraville War Memorial High School pole vaulter Will Lewis for winning the New Jersey Interscolactic Athletic Association Sectionals. Also, congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School competition cheer team for winning first place in the game day division and second place in the Mega Varsity All-Music Division at the Impact Cheer and Dance Competition, as well as first place in the Mega Varsity All-Music Division, first place in the Mega Varsity Game Day Division, and for being crowned grand champs for the game day during the Howell High School Cheer Competition. And finally, congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School Boys Basketball Players, Sam Jones, Chidi Chukwua, and Keaton Schuler for being selected to the Greater Middlesex Conference All-White Division Team. This is the second consecutive year that Sam has achieved this honor. That's it?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Alrighty. And now, our presentations, Dr. Langer?
Yes, we are going to resume our 2024-2025 budget presentations. This evening, you are going to hear the transportation budget presentation, as well as the buildings and grounds and capital improvement projects presentation. During our next meeting on March 5th, we'll finish up with personnel and technology. So I know that Dr. Aguilas is hard at work preparing his presentation, but until then, we ask that Mr. Siniglia and Ms. Padilla join us here at the podium, and I know that we have some special guests here from transportation that are out to show their support. Mr. Siniglia, take it away.
So before I start my presentation, I want to take a few minutes to talk about the safety culture. So since I joined here as the transportation director, one of my goals has been to create a safety program to focus on how we look at what we see and what we do every day, not only in work, but in our personal lives through the lens of safety and daily practice that we could build a safety culture. So building a safety culture does not just happen by saying, just by saying it, or does it happen overnight. It takes months and even years, and it involves everybody. We start by making sure that everyone knows the meaning of safety and risk. Safety means freedom from risk, and risk means the possibility of bodily injury or damage to property. There are many regulations in place that govern the safety of our school buses, and because of them, only 1% of accidents occur from a school bus that has unsafe conditions, and 99% of accidents in school buses are caused by driver. Creating an effective safety culture requires reducing that risk. The staff needs to identify behaviors that involve risk so we can remove them. We're gonna focus on doing it right the first time, remove the risk, and eliminate unsafe behaviors. With this, we're gonna be starting off every meeting that we have moving forward with a safety message. So in spirit of that, we're gonna start my presentation off with a safety message. So tonight's safety message is going to be helpful hints when walking on snow and ice. So when walking on snow and ice, plan ahead and give yourself sufficient time and plan your route. Traffic moves slowly in snowy conditions. Give yourself that extra time. Don't assume a clear path for driving, and walking will be available. Wear shoes and boots that provide traction on snow and ice. Footwear made of rubber and neoprene composites provide better traction than plastic and leather shoes. Wear flat-soled shoes and avoid shoes with heels. Products are available with abrasive soles and cleats that provide special traction for walking on snow and ice, such as yak tracks. They do make like a plastic cleat that you put over your shoes to help walk in icy conditions. Use special care when entering and exiting vehicles, climbing or descending stairs, entering or leaving buildings. Move slowly. Remove snow and water from your shoes when entering buildings. Use handrails for support. Try to keep your center of gravity over your support leg. Use a car for support. Keep your hands out of your pockets. Walk on designated walkways as much as possible. Don't take shortcuts over snow piles or areas where snow and ice removal is not feasible. Look ahead when you walk. A sidewalk completely covered with ice may require travel along its grassy edge for traction. Don't text or read while walking, and that's good in any environment, not just the snow and ice. Walk safely on snow and ice. Take short steps or shuffle for stability. Bend slightly forward and walk flat-footed with the center of your gravity directly over your feet as much as possible. Keep your hands out of your pockets. Be prepared to fall. If you fall, fall with sequential contact at your hips, thighs, hip, and shoulder. Avoid using outstretched arms to brace yourself when you fall, and bend your back and head forward to avoid hitting your head against the ground. One time, it was explained to me the best way to walk in ice is when you walk like a penguin. So you stay flat-footed, spread your legs, and then you walk. That is the safest way to walk on snow and ice. So with that out of the way...
I was gonna say, you're on thin ice right now.
All right. I want to, and my deck is large, I know, I've heard several comments on it. We're gonna move through it as quick as possible. I just think it's important for me to take this opportunity to show everybody where we've spent the money that you've approved for us already, and you know, how much we have done, and then follow up with where we plan to spend the money that I'm asking for in this budget cycle. So we can start off with our uniform transportation staff. We have 62 full-time drivers and 31 bus aides. We're still short four bus aides at this point, for this current year, and that's all of them, pretty much, in their uniforms. I'm wearing the uniform tonight. We've gotten several compliments on it. The morale is high with it. You know, in my opinion, and many others' opinion, that the uniform brings more respect to the position, regardless of what role you're in. You dress for the job. You know, we're looking much more professional, and our people are feeling more professional. We also have... We've started our driver and bus aide appreciation. We're showing more appreciation for them, and this is zero-dollar impact to our budget. So this just takes a little bit of effort. I'm always making up different slides. I'll pass them off occasionally to Dr. Labbe and ask that he have them posted on social media. I'm sure that a lot of people have seen that. It just puts a signal out there that, you know, we know that the drivers are out there doing their job, and we appreciate what they do. So, moving along, we have fully implemented and integrated the Stop Finder app. This is out in full force now. We did a soft opening with it before winter break, just to help us get activated to the data. That needs to go in it to keep it up to date and accurate. And then we followed up with, after the winter break, we've given them the GPS locations of all their bus routes. So as of now, any student, any parent that rides in a Saraville-owned school bus has the ability to see where that bus is in relationship to their particular route during the time that their route services for their school and their trip. It has taken a little bit while for it to catch on. I think our activated members are somewhere almost 4,000, mid-3,000 students now that are using it. People aren't really familiar with how to use it as much as we'd like them to be, so every time we get a call and somebody wants to know where their bus is or what's going on, we'll take that extra few minutes to walk them through the app and help them get it set up properly, and they're thrilled once they get known. They're very happy, it's been very well received, and it's helping to reduce a lot of the call volumes that we take in each morning and each afternoon. So... Are you somewhat anticipating any issues with parenting dilemmas where maybe someone doesn't have custody, but they have the app and they know where the kid is, anything like that? Do we talk about that? With our driver? So we only grant access to the person that's designated as their primary contact in Encores. Our data is pulled directly from Encores. I don't have the ability to assign that to anyone else. If I did put somebody else in there, the system would kick it out on the Encores refresh and send it back to what's, you know, what's agreed upon, whatever we put. Yeah. The administration accepts it there as their primary contact. They have the ability to share their location or to share their app with anybody they want to, but that's on them 100%. I can't do it, you can't do it, nobody here can do it. Only the parent of that child that has that app that was initially sent to them can grant access for somebody else to see it. Well, we think if you get the husband and wife for a moment, the father, presumably it's the father, would have access to Encores because he'd wanna see his child's grades and everything like that, so he would get the updates. I'm just playing devil's advocate. It wouldn't probably happen in a million years, but if it does, are we ready? Are our bus drivers like, are they, you know, 100% secure and saying, you're not the person I'm supposed to drop this person off to, blah, blah, blah? In any case...
And if I can jump in, I mean, if someone, if there were a parent who was still a guardian, but there was a restraining order on file, they would not be designated as a primary contact anymore?
True. I'll give you another one. You're supposed to get your child every Thursday, but you decide to get him Wednesday, just to break jobs that happens, right? Anybody who knows the divorce lawyers know that happens. So my point is, just are they aware, the drivers aware, look, this could be...
They're not aware of, they're not aware of arrangements like that. They're not aware, in many cases, of, you know, John gets picked up by mom and dad, by mom on this day or dad on that day. In some cases, they might be, but no, they're not. That's a situation in which parents are gonna have to work that out. So if father picks up the daughter on the wrong day, then mother and father are gonna have to work that out. But what we're responsible for, if father who has a restraining, or mother who has a restraining order finds out where the child is gonna be and picks them up, then that is on us.
Okay, but that would, this would tell them?
In this particular case, as Patrick noted, that parent would no longer be a primary contact.
After the first incident?
Yeah, well, if we, whenever we have something on file.
Right, okay.
And many times, we do let bus drivers know if there is a restraining order against a certain person, particularly in grades K through 3, where it's required that somebody's at that bus stop, so.
And so just to be clear, the app doesn't tell our drivers who we can get that child to or not. The app simply says that this child is on this bus stop, and this is the time that that bus stop will be there. In the event that there is a restraining order, I'm gonna have to say 100% of the time, because I don't know of any time that it's not, we are told, do not release this child to this person, this one can't do that. That information, that confidential information, is then taken to the people who are on a need-to-know basis. So we will tell that driver or that bus aide specifically not to release a child to this person, and of course, this is only, you know, pre-K through elementary, you know, middle school, UES, middle school, high school, we have no control over that, unless there's special needs, and then we do have that information on file. So the drivers are made aware every single time that we know that something like that is in play, and they're aware of it, and they'll call all the time, even when it's not a part of it, part of anything that we have told them, and they see somebody new at the bus stop that they didn't recognize, they'll call into dispatch, we'll do the research for them, and we'll let them know whether they can release that child to that person or not.
Yet another reason why we want our own drivers driving our own buses.
Well, that's my next question. I would like to know, just for the record, that if we did not have our own bus drivers and we were, you know, leasing the buses from another company, would we have this functionality?
No.
We wouldn't have as much control on it, and to be honest with you, I would be a little apprehensive about how much information that I would release to that contractor, not knowing what they're gonna do with it. I mean, they have the same obligation and liability, legal liability, that we do for confidentiality. They, you know, they're under the same olic that we are, but, you know, I can't attest to that, that's what's being followed through.
And you said the parents are enjoying this. Have you gotten any complaints from parents about this technology, other than they can't use it?
No, other than frustration?
Yeah, other than their initial signing up. After the fact, have you gotten complaints from parents saying, hey, I don't really wanna know where my kid is?
No, I've never heard anybody say that.
I don't wanna know where my kids are.
I just want that for the record, thank you.
I think those are people that wouldn't even bother calling me because they don't care.
And I'll take it a step further. The, you know, normally when we have a snowstorm or we have days after snow, and there's been so many road closures in Saraville for the past several months, normally we'll get an email, I'll get many emails from parents saying, you know, my child was out at the bus stop for, you know, 30 minutes. What's going on? How come we didn't get any notification and so forth? Well, I don't get those emails anymore, because for the most part, parents are on the app, and they're, we still have delays, obviously, but now they know when the bus is coming, so their child is not out at the bus stop for 25 minutes in the freezing cold. They know when that bus is coming, so they get them there just about the time the bus arrives. So I have definitely seen a reduction, a huge reduction, in negative parent emails about delays.
And those are the parents that will call us and complain, and we'll walk them through the process of using the app, so, you know, that call doesn't occur, that doesn't happen anymore. And the funny thing is, you know, I'm not, I'm not a social media guy. I don't go on Facebook. I never did until recently, because I just felt like I just had to, like, hear what's going on in Saraville.
You're probably better off off.
No, you didn't. You didn't need to hear what's going on.
You're smarter staying off it.
The funny part is that now, on the delayed openings and the school closures, there are advocates for Stop Finder app out there, and they're saying, you should download the Stop Finder app, you know, it tells you, you know, where the bus is and everything now. So it's definitely a great addition, and it's something that we can continue to build on, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation.
Could I just ask you one more question?
Sure.
So since you've implemented the Stop Finder, right, since that time, how many times has the Saraville police been out searching for one of our buses?
I don't know. I haven't heard of any, but...
All right, so zero, right?
Yeah, but, again, it will, it will, it's not, and it's kinda like segue to something else I'm gonna present further to budget, but it tells us what time that bus was at that stop, if we needed to know. What it does not tell us is who's on that bus, right? So, and that's where a lot of the confusion happens when there's a lost child. Somebody puts a kid on a bus that we didn't know didn't belong there, and/or got off at a stop that we really didn't know if they should've gotten off at that stop or not. You know, we, drivers have a list of everybody there, but depending on the load of the bus and the age group, it's, you know, it's very difficult to keep track of every single kid that's on there. You know, they'll count and do numbers, but as far as names, you know, it's something that's very difficult to do.
I only mention it because previously, the police did have to search for buses, because we had no clue where the bus was.
Yeah.
So my point here is that this is a great improvement. Not only does it give the parents the ability to see where the bus is, it gives us the ability to see where the bus is, so we could avoid all of that...
Yeah, we have the ability to see where every single one of our buses are at any given time. You know, I could pull up my cellphone right now and tell you where any one of our buses is.
Good, we hope. This sounds like a great thing.
Yep. So, I was trying to speed things up.
Sorry. How about if we let him finish and save our questions?
Again, he's on thin ice.
So, moving on to our next 23-24 budget expenditure was fleet and maintenance. So we did hire the one bus mechanic, and we did finally get our long-awaited fleet service vehicle, the picture of it in the slide there. We did purchase five new 54-passenger buses, two new 29-passenger buses, and one new wheelchair We also secured our school bus safety and driver training program. We now have the ability to have both in-person training, or if we needed to, or we wanted to, at any point, maybe a driver missed a safety meeting, and they are required to attend them. We could give them a virtual module, or we can have them come in and sit in our office and run the program through the computer, so we can ensure that each person is receiving the safety training program that we're putting out. We have that out in full blast right now, and we'll start moving forward that, and that's one of the other things that, you know, was big for me to get accomplished once I first came here.
Have you seen a lot of bus aides transition to drivers through this program?
We do. We've had, so actually, we've had a large influx of driver applicants, and many of them are not drivers, you know, right now or currently. So what we do is we hire them as bus aides, and then we send them through our outsourced training program. Eventually, you know, now that we have this program in place, and if we can, you know, facilitate the space and everything that we need, we're gonna take that outsourced school bus licensing process in-house, and this sets the groundwork for that as well. But yeah, we are training aides throughout the year continuously to become bus drivers.
Great.
All right. So that's where we are, and this is where we're headed. The addition of Wayfinder is an add-on to the TransFinder programs, which is Route Finder, and this is an app that will allow us to eliminate in-hand, paper-in-hand, and radio jam-ups that occur when drivers need to learn new stops, trips, recovering other stops, trips, or routes. It gives us the ability to send any routing information directly to the driver on the school bus. It will offer us the ability to capture and share when and where each student gets on and off the bus each day. It will let us know, or can let us know, the driver know, that if an unauthorized student attempts to board the bus. So, happens a lot at the upper grade levels, the high school, where it's just flat-out, the kids just wanna get on different buses, they wanna go somewhere else and ride another bus on. It could be for any reason. It could be for, you know, they wanna do it to innocently, they just wanna go hang out with their friend after school, or, you know, they could wanna beat somebody up on that bus, like any other grades, we've seen the kids get on the bus, and, you know, and then they go on, and there's a fight on the bus, or we get them off, and let them off the bus, and a fight on the side of the road. There's many reasons why we need to know who gets on that bus. In the lower grades, it happens when a younger child gets put on a bus, and the driver doesn't know who this kid is. bus and the driver doesn't know who this kid is, if they really belong on the bus. This will flag that student right away. So we could set the system up where it has an RFID, RFID reader on it, every student ID as we have them now, so we won't have to add additional IDs or whatever, we can incorporate it into our student IDs. They'll go past the RFID reader, um, it'll pop that kid up on the screen and it will say whether they're assigned to that route or not. Um, and, you know, we can nip that right in the bud. And then to the, um, the other scenario where, uh, sending a kid out, we're calling the cops because we have a lost kid, we will know exactly where and what bus and what time that child got on and exactly where that child got off the bus and, uh, when, you know, down to the second. Um, this is, you know, this is, this is the next step in technology that will give us full visibility as to where our children are at every point during transportation trip.
Yeah, to my question, how, how, how deep are we into looking into that, um, program where the kid scans on them? How closely?
I'm fully, you know.
It's in his budget.
So you need to do this next year?
If, if we restore it, right now it was cut, but yeah, it's in his budget.
It's, it's just an add-on. It's a matter of purchasing the, the software and there is a hardware purchase that would be required, um, that, you know, I, I've been in discussions with Eric in technology. We've, we've looked at different options and different price modules. We do have numbers for that worked into the budget, um, if that's the route that we decide to go to.
And every student in district would need an ID. We're already piloting that in many of our schools, but we would have to make sure that moving forward, even our preschoolers, they all have IDs that they, they wear.
When the kid loses his ID, which my children tend to do every couple of weeks, are they still gonna be able to get on the bus? Is there, how do we?
It, it might be an issue if the bus driver doesn't recognize them. If the bus driver recognizes them, it probably won't be an issue, but we wouldn't be able to track your child getting on the bus and getting off the bus, so.
I was curious more like.
We'd wanna make sure that the child gets a new ID as fast as possible.
So, and also, you know, to that, the, there is an increasingly large, um, issues or, or a large amount of issues with language barriers. Um, and we don't understand, um, what this child, even they're telling us their name, you know, especially with the younger kids, they don't even, you know, they, whether, whether they can say their name or they're just too shy to say it. Um, you know, when that happens, we try to, you know, look for some sort of identifying marks on them. We'll try to go into their backpack, we'll try to see if there's somewhere where we can get their name. Um, even with some of the older kids where, you know, they're not, they're not speaking the language, um, and they can't communicate to us where they live or who they are. This takes all that out of the picture, you know, this, this, this like puts us all on, on the same playing field. We'll know exactly who everybody is, whether they can communicate to us or not. Um, and then also in the event of an accident or something like that, we immediately know who was and was not on that vehicle, whether we can have the ability to communicate with the driver that asked them or not. We have it. We have it. The school will have it. Uh, anybody we grant access to it will have that information. So with that, um, it does require, um, that we do have connectivity, uh, whether that be, uh, be a cellular or Wi-Fi on that vehicle to transmit that information. Um, that is in the budget, uh, as well, should we go that route. We already do have the GPS. Uh, what I'm looking at, uh, doing and exploring is on the next slide, uh, is with, uh, a, a company called Samsara. So Samsara is, um, will be able to supply us with all the technology, um, that we're using today and moving forward. Um, everything that we're talking about now and then everything that we'll be talking about in the future requires a reliable, adaptable and affordable platform to operate. So through my research, I've come across Samsara. Samsara is a nationally recognized, uh, platform that can provide us, provide us with all our connectivity issues, um, through Wi-Fi, uh, on all of our buses. It will, uh, also include a, a maintenance program for our fleet that includes, uh, remote vehicle diagnostics, the GPS tracking and safety scorecards. The initial, uh, cost of this is actually a no-brainer, providing that it does work. Um, we are trying to work out a pilot program. They've agreed to, um, give us 10 units, uh, with, fully open to us, fully, you know, seeing everything that it can do and run it on a side-by-side comparison of what we are using now, um, for no charge. And if it does work out and, and then we move on to it, then, you know, we'll explore that, uh, process of bringing them in. But the price on that alone, um, is significantly cheaper than, you know, what we're doing right now. So I hope that it works out, uh, the way that we want to, um, but again, I won't know until we actually do a side-by-side comparison with what we're doing right now and we're working on it. Um, you know, I'm, with Aaron, uh, probably twice a week, you know, what's going on? How we doing it? But we're getting there. We made a lot of, we made a lot of headway, I think, on that today, um, so we'll see what happens. So with this, um, there is an, uh, an additional feature available and it is the integration of AI, artificial intelligence. Um, it's a, uh, through, through an available dash cam that will focus on a driver, um, driver safety through monitoring, safe habits and with real-time in-cap coaching on risky behavior. So we spend a lot of time and money watching the children on the bus and how they're reacting. Um, and we have very little visibility as to what our drivers are actually doing out there. This is a, this is a great program. I, I've done something like this in the past in my past life. I didn't agree with the way that they did it, but the concept is terrific. Um, in the past, the, we had, you know, we had a system called Drive Cam and the Drive Cam is monitored through a third party, um, and they would monitor any driver activity and report it back to us and then we would have to act on it. The method that we used in my past life was very draconian. It was clear-cut, you broke the rules, we got you, we fired you. I don't agree with that. I, I don't, I don't think, um, even with the biggest infraction, the cell phone use, even if a cop pulls you over on a cell phone, he doesn't, you know, throw you in jail, right? You get fined, uh, you get a ticket. Um, if that happens again, then you're gonna lose your license and you can lose your livelihood. And don't get me wrong, I think cell phone use on a school bus is probably the most egregious offense that you can do. Um, it is almost as bad, if not worse, as, you know, driving under the influence. Um, but what this program will allow us to do, and this is being adopted now in, in many different organizations across the country. There are schools that are doing this, there are municipalities that are doing this. It will give the driver coaching as it's happening. So it gives them the opportunity to correct their ways. Um, right now, we find out when a driver's doing a thing, i- if we get a complaint and we, we're, we're forced to pull a video and look at it. Really, that's the only thing we can do. We just don't have enough time to sit there and pull every single route, every single video, watch hundreds of hours of video every day. It's not possible. This system will do that for us. Let the driver know that, hey, you're doing, you're following these vehicles too closely. You need to adjust your, your vehicle. And they do it with an audible tone or audible words or pulsations, whatever we tell it to do, however we tell it to notify the driver. If they pick up their cell phone, we see a handheld device, the camera sees a handheld device in there, it says, hey, put your phone down. It tells them. It actually sees them and tells them to do it. So this gives them the opportunity to, to correct themselves. And again, comes that safety culture, right? So the, you just need to be told time and time over again, you need to embed it into them and then they will get to do it and hopefully understand it. If it doesn't, if they don't and they ignore it and the continuous, you know, we see it, you know, egregious offenses, then, you know, then that leads to further disciplinary action. But this, this gives us the ability to know what that driver's doing out there. If that driver's acting unsafe, we'll get notified that that's what that driver's doing and that driver will be notified at the instance that it's happening. Um, and to me, that's priceless.
You can run a report then each quarter and show what the drivers.
Report daily, whatever, anyway, how many infractions, how many, how many drivers, who they were, that were doing this, you know, how many, you know, that were, were doing, making harsh turns. There's been different variations of this over the years. Uh, one time we used a company called Green Roads and, um, there was a, and there was a gyroscope in the bus and it, it didn't film them for, um, for whether they're paying attention to the road or not. What it did was it, it recorded the way that they drove and we actually used to put a screen up in the dispatch with everybody's score and it gave them a score. So if you made a, a turn that was too fast or brake that was too hard or acceleration that was too fast and it lit up a red light and if you did everything good, you kept your light in green, so that's where the name Green Roads came from. And it would turn into a competition, like who was the safest driver, um, and they would see it every time they went into there. That, that was like an industry level to this that occurred, I'm not gonna say probably no back 10, 15 years. This, I think, is great. Um, and this is where it gets a little bit costly. This technology does not come cheap, but it is a tack-on to Samsara that is available to us. So even if we don't get to this point and we did go to Samsara and it does work out well, this is an option that we have to always add on at any time. And to me, this is just the beginning. I mean, AI is, you know, everywhere now, so, uh, I mean, it, it could, in theory, monitor the behavior of the children as well. It could let us know.
Would this potentially decrease our, um, insurance cost if we have this feature?
Uh, I believe.
Our, our bus insurance?
Um, our bus insurance, our transportation insurance is very, very low, so I, I doubt it. I think it's only like $35,000 a year for all the vehicles that we have. They don't even, like $35,000 a year for all of our vehicles. It never goes up for how many vehicles we have. It's very low, so I doubt it.
I pay that for my family.
I was saying, man, listen, the private industry, I was paying $5,500 a year per bus.
Patrick, is this true any parallels to Waytech? I mean, can we, if the parents can get a, you know, with this, right, that Waytech, is it Waytech?
Wayfinder.
Wayfinder, part of my department. Could this take the place of Wayfinder or is it two separate entities?
No, this is, this doesn't have it. And this is not to be shared with anybody other than us. We do not want everybody involved in, in, in discipline and, and, you know, managing our employees.
Yeah, no, 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 I meant the app for the, for the, uh, parents to know where their children are at the same time. Could you, is it all in one or do you have to have Wayf- Way, what the hell?
Wayfinder, so Wayfinders are tack-on to our routing software. This is just a platform that will give us the connectivity issues that we need. Um, and replace our current maintenance program, which we are having a problem with, uh, the company's sold to, uh, an international company, we can't even get service on it or whatever, but that needs to be replaced anyway. Uh, that comes included in this. This system, the way it stands without, without the, um, dash cam, is $19.50 per bus, per month. We pay more than that and for that, we get GPS.
Yeah.
We get, um, the Wi-Fi connectivity, we get, um, the, uh, the Wi-Fi connectivity, we get the maintenance program and we'll also get, um, like different coaching program or whatever that's in the base model. That is included for the 1950 month. We don't pay for the equipment, purchase it and it's a self-installation.
Okay.
So, to me, that's, that's why I say it's a no-brainer, right? So we pay, we pay way more than that for our GPS service right now.
But the AI is the whole, the whole thing here is, is, is what it does for the drivers to say, hey, you're a little close, whatever the case may be.
Yep.
That's what makes this really great.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, this is.
The other stuff is, you know, we are doing.
The other stuff is what we, we need to operate every day.
Yeah.
This is something that we should be doing.
So this is like 19 a month per bus? What, if you throw AI on, how much is that?
AI, the AI, uh, right now, I believe is $40 per bus, per month.
Okay.
What, what do we pay now?
We don't have anything like.
No, but for, for our GPS, the service we use now, you said this is cheaper because it gives us the cellular connectivity, the maintenance program, everything for $19 a bus.
Yes, and I.
How does that compare to what we're doing now?
We do not have cellular.
Yeah, you have GPS and, and.
We just have GPS and a service of GPS. Don't have that price available to me, but I can tell you that, um, it is much more than $19.50 per bus.
Do you find that there's any pushback from the drivers being videotaped or they don't?
All right, so we, we pay our drivers to do the job, to be safe and responsible out there. Uh, there's not a driver out there that, um, that we tell to not be safe, you know, and we're not spying on them. Um, we, we want them to be safer. We're not gonna use it as a method of, um, you know, termination or whatever, you know, we're gonna use it.
Listen, it sounds great. I was just curious, like if anyone else put this in and they notice like.
We got a lot of drivers left once it came in. In my past life, we got a lot of, uh, pushback on it, but it was because the way they rolled it out and the way they implemented it, right? So it was like, hey, you broke the rules, you're gone.
Right.
All right? Um, and, you know, without going and saying where I was or who I was working for at some time, I was working for a company that was servicing Sayerville schools and they did not have enough drivers to cover routes. You guys felt the pain here because they had such a stringent rule on that and, and yes, drivers did quit because of it and a lot of drivers got fired because of it. So it's all about how you implement it. Uh, there's not a driver that works for me that thinks I'm out there to get them. I am their biggest advocate. I appreciate what they do. I let them know that I appreciate what they do and even when they do something wrong, they're brought into my office to talk to with either myself or Stephanie, uh, and we talk to them about them, about what happened and how we can prevent it from happening again. Uh, we are not taking an approach that we're just, we're, we're looking to, you know, cut your feet out from other people. We need them, uh, and we like to think that they need us to. So, so much for being quick. Um, more to come on that. So also in my budget for this year, I'm asking for, um, an additional secretary. This secretary, uh, is to be shared between my office and the maintenance office. So keeping our data up to date is essential to produce real information available through our technology. We're only as good, uh, spitting out information as the information that we put in. Uh, and it, every time we add things like this, it just, you know, it, we have to make sure that the data is correct and that it's updated on a regular basis and we just need another person to do that, especially more so in the maintenance department because our fleet is growing so much, uh, and a lot of the maintenance information has to be put in manually. So that's quick on that. Also in our budget for this year, we have, um, in for seven new 54 passenger buses, one new mini bus, two replacement mini buses, one of which is a wheelchair, uh, an additional, um, school bus mechanic to bring us, um, up to, uh, industry standards for, uh, mechanic to, uh, school bus ratio. Uh, we talked about this last year in the budget presentation, we knew that this was coming. After this year, we will be, um, 100% in-house, in-district routes. So, um, we're there, you know, it's been a road, long road, we've been working on it the past few years. This is the final stretch, uh, barring anything, you know, that gets crazy enrollment and then changes, you know, although it could, you know, they're building all over Sayerville now, but we should be, uh, we should be good to go after this round of purchasing vehicles. And, um, there's a couple of items in there for the shop, um, the power washer, uh, battery chargers and some portable shop lights. Uh, and the rest of it is just to sustain extra, uh, the existing items, uh, the uniforms that we have in place, the training programs that we rolled out. that we have in place, the training programs that we've rolled out, our, our transportation route vehicle and video management systems, everything that we currently have in place. That's really all that's in that budget. Uh, you know, it's a couple of, of bigger ticket items, but not a whole lot. Um, so, um, our twenty-four, twenty-five goals, uh, is to promote a safety culture, one hundred percent in-district routes, improve driver safety, introduce a Wayfinder, uh, hire the additional, uh, drivers and bus aides, uh, and to hopefully adopt this Samsara platform. The challenges that we have, um, into this budget is, um, into this budget cycle. In the next school year is, uh, time, as always, our biggest issue. Um, and, um, hiring and maintaining a stable, uh, bus aide roster. We're always struggling for bus aides. Dr. Lobby, who knows that probably better than anybody else because he's actually been out there and been a, a bus aide for us a few times. So, uh, that is a challenge and, um, of course, the lack of space to maintain and service our fleet. We have some ongoing issues with the, uh, DEF systems, uh, in our newer buses and, uh, the workload for maintenance staff. And also we'll throw in there that, um, staff timeout, uh, time off has been a little bit of an issue for us. Uh, we are there with our driver staffing numbers on paper, but we do have a lot of drivers that have, um, you know, been out for one reason or another, um, and, and sometimes a lot more than we can handle. So we still have those issues where we may have to double back for a route or not, but it's not because we're not fully staffed, we are staffed. We just need to now start working on. A lot of the drivers seem to feel that, um, they, they've really stepped up over the, uh, past when we were so short, they'd never been able to take any of the time off that they wanted to. We always put the guilt trip on them. They see where we are in staffing, so, you know, they're quicker now to ask for that time off. And they, they deserve it, I get it, but, um, we need to work with them better, uh, in scheduling that time off, so.
So, quick question, last one. Um, the ratio, twenty-five to one, uh, so if you get a fourth mechanic, ballpark seventy-five buses, if my math is right, we're around eighteen to one now? Can we bring that down considerably, right, the way it should be?
So we are, and I, I did, um, put that in my notes, I just need to find.
I'm just asking, so we have left the right number of mechanics going forward? If that's the number, you're gonna ask for more next year?
So we are, um, I think, and I, and I, I was certain I put it in my notes, but I don't see it. I think the industry standard was somewhere around, um, sixteen and a half.
You said fifty to twenty here. That's right, it's part of it.
Yeah, wherever I put it.
It's on your challenges underneath.
Okay, yeah, there it is. Yeah, so.
So that should bring us right into the ratio where we should be with one mechanic, unless, unless my math.
So it will. So if we, uh, based on the, on the hiring of the additional mechanic, I think the number put us at like eighteen.
That's right, okay.
About eighteen to one. And that puts us right in the recommendation of, of where we should be. Um, you know, twenty-five to one is, is not good. You know, you get away with it for a while, but now that, you know, they, we're start, our, we have buses that are starting to get older and older and, and that's when it really falls in. Um, especially comes into play when we're getting ready for state inspections, which are, um, coming up next week for us, uh, where the state will come in and spend at least a week with us, uh, and they go through every single bus, uh, head to toe. It's done twice a year. And, uh, getting, getting all those buses in and looked at before the inspectors come and start doing their inspection is challenging. Uh, and my next slide is the end.
Any other board members have any questions?
No, but I do wanna have a, I wanna make a comment.
Go right ahead.
Since you joined our group here, you know, as the transportation director, um, you've done a good job and you really have made a big difference for the children of Savel who were on buses because of the fact that we were, we didn't have our own drivers. They were subject to being lost and, you know, not found and, you know, the whole bus, not just one kid, but the entire bus. So you really have made a good improvement and I thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, it, it's not an individual effort. Um, you know, it, you know, I'm able to be the leader of great management, great staff below me and the drivers who really care about it and wanna do a good job. So, um, I, I'm happy to take credit, but it, you know, it comes from everybody beneath it.
Thank you, drivers.
Yeah.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're done?
And thank you to, uh, our wonderful staff of drivers and mechanics.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
And thank you to Stephanie back there, too.
Why is Rick driving the bus?
Yeah, that, that doesn't, that doesn't get you any extra credit in this period.
You see that you're driving the bus there, Rick?
Look at that. The driver has Rick on his shirt. My, my, my wife has to see that.
He's kissing her.
You've never done that job here, signed up the other one?
No, I, I, I've, I've asked Patrick if I can get my, uh, CDL. Maybe that's the next thing I work on.
Oh, stop. We will not let you drive buses.
Okay, so let's keep moving along. Mr. Coleman's Burger's here and he's going to present to you with the assistance of Ms. Hill.
I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman's Burger.
Mr. Coleman's Burger's got the whole deal, uh, buildings and grounds and capital projects.
I'm, I'm sorry, Patrick took your time, so.
Okay, it was nice seeing you, so I gotta go.
You need a three-minute rule.
Can I have a three-minute clock, please?
There you go. I think you can do it, Jimmy.
I'm not gonna talk about ice and snow, trust me.
Okay, thank you.
That's not fun for me. Um, I'm gonna start with our achievements that we made. Um, like always, I have to thank all my staff for, uh, helping us throughout the referendum and all the other projects that we have. If it isn't for them, we really couldn't get half the stuff done. We ripped apart schools and we got them back together in time for school, so that's a big accomplishment. And, uh, with the hiring of Ken Sadowski as my assistant, it really, uh, made the, uh, referendum work a lot more seamless for me. Um, all right, starting at the middle school, we finally finished BA. We got it all painted, um, new flooring, looks really nice. Uh, we still have work to do in there, like, once we start the HVAC projects and we'll get that to what we really need it to be. Um, in the nurses' room, we, we actually put the sink where it belongs, so it's up to code outside the, the bathroom. We also took down a wall inside the bathroom to make it more handicap accessible. It used to be a shower area, it's no longer a shower area and we have a full bathroom in there. And we also added a ice machine to, uh, for the nurse for little boo-boos and stuff like that for the kids. Um, over at Slover School, we replaced five classroom floors and we did the all-purpose room. And honestly, I know Rick said this in the past, if you really wanna see something special, you really should get out to Slover School. The work that's been done there is incredible. We painted all the hallways also over the years, over the summer with the staff, our staff, and, uh, it does look pretty amazing.
When these projects are done, you should send us pictures.
Yeah, I should.
We're not gonna visit the schools more than like, you know.
Right, you're right, I should. Maybe I'll go on a photo shoot this weekend.
Yeah.
Um, over at the high school, the auditorium work has started with the sound system. It should be done by today, tonight or tomorrow. Um, it's coming along great. Uh, I don't know what it sounds like, to be honest with you. It's not my thing.
Can't be worse, huh?
Right, it's definitely not. Um, I got a call today, we're gonna be starting the high school sound system on Friday to start installing that, so that's, that's a great progress there, too. Um, and then.
That's a stadium.
The stadium.
The high school stadium.
Yeah, the high school stadium will be starting just the sound, not the lighting, just the sound. The lighting is still coming in on order and once it's in, we'll, I'll work with Chen and the schedulers to try to do it. Our plan is with that, just so everybody knows, we'll probably go one pole at a time so we don't lose all the lights at one time. Um, I did miss something with the, uh, high school auditorium. We did, um, improve all the rigging so it's safe and up to code and it passed inspection. Um, there's a bunch of other stuff that I don't have in here that we've done throughout the years, like cleaning all the schools and all that. I'm sure everybody knows what we do, um, getting different areas painted. But for the most part, the referendum, which is, I wanna talk about next, is, which took up most of the summer. We ripped out pretty much everything out of Truman School. Uh, replaced all the pipes in the ceiling, we took ceiling tiles out. If you looked at it, you would've probably been like, oh my God, we're never gonna get it open. And we did it. Uh, not me, it's me and our guys, but the contractors were great. Um, we were able to get the nurses' suite and some offices, the main office. We figured out a way to get power to them so they had the air conditioning, heating from the new stuff that's going in. So that was a, a big accomplishment. And that took us a little longer than we expected, but in the long run, it ended up being great for the environment there. Um, we still have a lot of work to go there. Um, the projected date is probably mid-April when, uh, we'll be able to start doing more work. Um, we're gonna have another summer that's gonna be eventful because we still have more pipes to take out and all the old Nesbit units that are in the classrooms have to come out after we put the new ones in. And like I said, I'm hoping to do, we're like two to three rooms at Truman because of the, s- the size of the school and where we can move kids while we're working. And that will happen after the, we finish the upstairs at the high school. Um, part of that was the high school, the high school, same thing. We ripped out ceilings, we got all new piping in there, we did ductwork, we did, we moved sprinkler systems. And now we're starting, hopefully next week, we're gonna start in the D wing and start adding the new Univan leaders that have the air conditioning. And we're gonna do so many that we've done. It looks like four rooms comfortably we'll be doing. We'll start with four, once we finish them four, then we'll go on with the next ones. Um, then we went on to the windows. Now, part of the windows at Slover is also the security vestibule. The security vestibule is coming along great. Um, they're saying the storefront, which is the, the main front doors, probably another couple of weeks before that's available. Once that's done, then they'll be able to close it in, take that lovely plywood away and it'll look better. Um, the, the front of the school, there, there's panels which we picked blue. It should look more preschool-ish. And, um, we blended the, the colors of the hallways with, with, with paint and it's coming along. The bathrooms in the school also was part of that. Um, the nurses' room's almost complete, we're waiting on fixtures like toilet and stuff like that. We're due for our, uh, overhead inspection. Same thing with the lower bathrooms, we turned the two bigger ones into like three rooms, three bathrooms, two for students, one for staff. Um, coming along and it looks beautiful. No, I don't have pictures. I should, I will, I will get pictures, definitely. And then hopefully we're, the projected thing is in two weeks, taking down the barriers that we put in so we can get the hallways back open. So hopefully that'll go smooth and we'll be going there. Um, as far as windows, we started Arloth also. Uh, Arloth is probably sixty-five percent complete. They're gonna start back up tomorrow. Um, and they say they should be done by next week with all the windows that have to be done, which is the whole, as I call the new section, or the slanted roof section of the building. After that, we're gonna move unfortunately back to Slover and ta- and start, uh, making Nina's, uh, life a little bit more challenging. And they're figuring two weeks to three weeks because of the auditorium, we're gonna be redoing them windows also. Um, and then the middle school is probably gonna be mid-May because of how many windows are in the middle school and doors and it'll be a long, uh.
Three minutes is up.
Lead time. That was my three-minute time. I gotta go. Roofing, uh, the, uh, we completed Arloth and that's all the shingled roof. The rest of the roof was already under a warranty. Um, we started working here, we got all the repair work, most of them. We do have leaks here and there, but we're gonna get to it at, uh, once the weather changes. Um, the high school, all the roofs have been replaced that needed to be replaced. I know it, what it looks like and the metal is coming. I, some of the brake metal was brought in and they're, it might start next week, okay? And then, of course, them lovely blue panels that you see, um, that's part of the metal. Once that's in, it'll no longer look like it's falling down. And also part of that contract, once I get the, um, we did a change order recently, the coin on the side of the building is gonna be redone and rewrapped once I get the artwork approved by, um, Lucy, somebody on this side of the table. I will, uh, forward it on and I'll start making the, uh, getting that done. And then finally, our, uh, capital projects that we did was the SCUS, which is here, the new parking lot extension. And, uh, I'll tell you, if you ever wanna have a great day, join Rick on directing buses. It was one of the most fun summers I've had directing traffic with buses and everything with Rick.
Eating dust, yeah.
Yeah, it was fun, wasn't it? And you must wear sunblock just so you know when you're doing it in the summer. But if anybody has any questions on any of this.
And I learned never to stop a motorcycle going up a hill.
Yes, in the sand. Anything on, uh, this? All right.
Uh, yeah, I do have one question, Jimmy. What about the sign at the high school? Are we looking, is that part of?
We're looking into it, yeah. There's a lot of vendors that we're trying to find to, uh, repair it. A lot of them aren't part of the contract.
Is it cheaper or more practical to get a new one than try to repair that one?
Um, until I get quotes in on, it looks like either someone, A, smashed it or maybe guy's cotton grass put rocks to the, uh, LED boards, but.
It is a very antiquated sign.
The library has a beautiful new sign.
Right, and that's what we're looking to, we're looking to see if we can potentially replace it this year.
Maybe we can ask them for money. I'm just kidding, I shouldn't have said that, I apologize. Guess we'll move forward to what we would like to do next year. Um, Slover School, I would like to continue with all the floor replacements in the hallway if possible. Like I said, I'll get pictures and, uh, show you the difference between what we had and what it is now. And you'd probably agree that once we replace all the floors, it will make it so much better for the children and the staff because we're getting away the asbestos, the asbestos out of it. Um, I would like eventually to do that to all the schools, but financially, you know, it's a burden. Then, uh, I would like to start repaving Truman, Eisenhower and Sampson's Lot. Uh, we did park here, but not, the rest of it is old and we got some potholes forming. And part of Eisenhower, which is in Capitol, you'll see that we wanna do an expansion there to, for more, uh, to try to get the buses to come out of it more safe instead right in front of them there. Um, Arloth School, we would like to upgrade all their student bathrooms. The same thing with the upstairs bathrooms at the middle school. Um, they're like the last few bathrooms that we have to install. And if anybody's been in Arloth, you'll understand why I'm saying these front two bathrooms are pretty. I think when, they, they've been needed and this would be, uh, probably one of my top lists of what we should. If we're gonna add stuff back into the budget, the bathrooms at Arloth would probably be my first choice. Uh, middle school, like I said, the upper, uh, thing. And then, um, also in the, um, the on-science lab, we would like to take and make it into like a more STEM, take out all the old science tables and gas and that's in there, make it more into a STEM lab. And then the drainage at, at here and at Arloth, uh, every time that it rains heavy, our stockroom kinda gets flooded out because all the water comes in through the bottom doors and goes in. And then we learned in that one flood that, um, at Arloth, about, all the water came in underneath the gym doors and got into our gymnasium. And I believe some, I think you were there when it happened, I'm not sure. But we had some floating cones and stuff, so we would like to correct that problem. Um, and of course, we're gonna continue with the referendum in all the schools. That's the plan. Hopefully everything comes in under bid and, um, we have bids coming in. We just did the window bid and we got the slow, um, Sampson and Middle School bid in for HVAC and they are under budget, I believe.
They're within the budget.
Yeah, and, um, the rest of them will come in. Then, of course, we have the electrical upgrades, which is gonna be a long task. We're having some issues with that, but I think hopefully now that we got a little sterner with the contr- with the contractor, hopefully the stuff will come in and we can start this summer with doing power shutdowns and getting the electricity that we need and the power infrastructure that we need to continue on with the referendum. And then finally, capital, uh, projects for next year would be the middle school parking area and Eisenhower to make it more friendly for all the staff and give us enough parking for all of our staff, students, well, not students at the middle school, but you know what I mean, all the staff and the, where the buses are now currently. And we'll have more places to park and safer. places to park, and safer. And then finally, our high school stadium upgrades, which is making the whole front of the stadium more appealing to everyone coming in, and adding security stuff into there, so the fans and spectators and everybody are safe. But that's really all I got. I'm sure there's more on some people's lists.
You're doing a fine job, Jimmy, and I want to thank you for the lights out front.
You're welcome.
It was light when I got here, but it will be dark when I leave, so thank you for the lights.
That's it.
And I'm sure the bus drivers thank you for the lights as well.
Yes, they did.
Any more questions for Mr. Coleman's Burger?
I have any questions, but the same thing as with the bus guy. You do a really good job. Your staff does a great job on a shoe sting, a shoe, a shoe-string budget. You really keep this school district put together, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm very fortunate with the staff I have. And like I said, with Kenny coming on, it helped out a lot with doing all that. And of course, the support of all you guys, we would not be where we are today, and it's come a long way since I've been here since 1986, so it's come a long way.
Oh, wow. Thirty-something years.
Yeah, 3888, to be exact.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And Mrs. Bloom, that concludes our reports.
Okay.
Our presentations, I should say.
We will now move on to board discussion, finance and infrastructure. Mr. Smith?
Well, we can keep the finance meeting real short. It's pretty much Jimmy's presentation.
There you go. Okay, we accept. Next. Anything you want to add? No? Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Ms. Pylock, personnel, please.
Sure. The personnel committee met earlier this evening. We reviewed open positions for both certificated and non-certificated staff, discussed our career and job fairs that are going to be happening this spring, and that just about sums it up.
Okay. And, oh, now that's me. Middlesex County School Board Association. The next meeting will be virtual on March 6. If you're interested, you definitely need to register for that. And then after that, in April, is the Unsung Heroes banquet. And that will be on the 18th at Old Bridge High School, as it has been the past few years. And we have our.
We do.
Kids in there. Okay, excellent.
We submitted, you had to submit by last Friday.
Perfect.
We submitted, I think, on Wednesday.
Okay. So, that's, that's it for that. All righty. Moving right along. Public participation on agenda items only. Seeing none, we will close public and move on to superintendent's report.
And I'll be brief. Let's turn our attention to, okay, start, go.
Go.
Page three, number 13, on finance and infrastructure. We're asking you to approve a very special grant, the submission of the 2024 Expanding Access to Climate Change Education. It's an interdisciplinary learning and community resilience project grant for $31,875. $31,875. Ms. Burt has been working very hard with Ms. Grossman and some of our department supervisors on this. It's going to provide us with the opportunity to expand high-quality and standards-based climate change education for students in grades six through eight, a primary focus on grade seven in social studies, science, mathematics, and English language arts. Any questions on that motion, or any other motions on finance and infrastructure? All right, seeing none, let's turn your attention to student achievement, page three, number three, and we're asking you to approve the, actually, I, that's incorrect. It starts on page eight, I think?
Seven, page seven.
Page seven, I'm sorry about that. Number three on page seven, we're asking you to approve the middle school credit completion summer school program. During our last meeting, we asked you to approve the learning acceleration at Camp Excel and Camp Excel programs. Now we're asking you to approve the middle school credit completion summer school program. Those classes will begin on July 1, and they'll end on August 8. Any questions on that, or any other items on student achievement? All right, seeing none. This time, I'll turn your attention to page nine, which I believe is the correct page number. Number two, on governance, we're asking to approve the 2025-2026 school district calendar. And I thank you all, as well as some of our collective bargaining units that provided me with input on this very challenging calendar. It's not perfect, but I think we have a solution. Any questions on that motion? All right. And finally, personnel, beginning with number six and seven, as well as 27, which you can find on page 12 and the addendum, we're asking you to hire new certificated and non-certificated staff for the school year. Number eight, which you can find also on page 13, we're asking you to approve the transfer of non-certificated staff for the school year. And finally, numbers 11 through 13, which you can find on pages 13 and 14, we're asking you to appoint paid coaches with their stipends, as well as volunteer coaches, for this school year, as well as for next school. And that concludes my report, Mrs. Bloom.
Wow.
I told you I'd be brief.
Record time, right?
What was it? A minute 35?
Yeah, that was well under your three minutes.
Thirty-eight. I had that internal clock moving as I was doing it.
Okay. I just would like to point out to the public on page four in our Buildings and Grounds that there is a financial advisor who is going to hold a free college planning workshop for parents at Sable Wall Memorial High School on Tuesday, April 2, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the library. So, I think that's important in case someone doesn't hear it. I'm sure they'll get information, but maybe they'll watch this and hear that it's a free financial college planning and.
And they are a patron. They're not, it's not, it's not a service to which, you know, we hadn't gone out and got. They don't represent the school district.
Right, right.
It's a private patron that they're paying to use our facilities.
Fees are in accordance, so they're coming in to provide this.
Yes.
And I also wanted to point out that 13 of the other 14 items are the Board of Education and the Sable School Board providing free space for the Sable Recreation Department activities.
Absolutely.
Okay. We need a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
She'll move.
Second.
All right, so I have Mr. Callahan and Mr. Smith?
I think, I think, I think Mr. Walsh may be doing it.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
He is.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody for the good of the order?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, a few updates I'd like to give.
Do you want to do public first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody from the public want to speak on anything at all? Seeing none, we'll close public. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to just mention, this past week, the Second Annual I Heart Horror Event took place, which raised $8,600 for a wonderful cause, which saves many lives at the Borah Hart and Lung. Also, the Rotary recently held the Father-Daughter Dance, where we had about 100 of our students and family attend. I'd like to give a special thank you to one of our own, Ms. Sarah Rota from W E Caterers, who catered the event, did an excellent job, and they always do an excellent job, so I just wanted to thank her and her staff.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Can I get a motion to close?
She'll move.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're adjourned. Your next meeting, March 7.
March 7.
I'm sorry, March 7.